I would like to call to order the Tuesday, August 19th Brooklyn Board of Education regular board meeting. Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Hubbell.
Here.
Mr. Rafter.
Here.
Mr. Hesroni.
Here.
And this is Rob.
Here. Please stand for the lunch. Hi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're sorry that the Brooklyn Board of Education approved the Board of Education agenda for August 19th, 2025 as recommended by the treasurer and superintendent. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Hesroni, yes. Mr. Hubbell.
Yes.
Mr. Rafter.
Yes.
And this is Rob.
Yes. In order for the board to fulfill its obligation to complete the planned agenda in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of 30 minutes of public participation as it pertains to school-related topics will be permitted at each meeting. Each person wishing to address the board will approach the podium and state his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted three minutes until a total time of 30 minutes is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak at head opportunity to do so. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board. Would anybody like to speak?
Yes. Justin Fincham, 4744 on Lane. I sent you guys a full email earlier today, so I was just gonna read off that. This way I don't try to freestyle and stay on task. As we know, yesterday, the property tax working group endorsed House Bill 186. They expect it to pass in October. Kind of what that means is, just to explain, is how we passed the issue 19, the six mil levy renewal, or generate 1.7 annually for operations like techno- technology and athletics. Despite this, we stay at the 20 mil floor. We have state policy ensuring at least 20 mils of property tax revenue. It's on purpose. It's a financial tool districts use to maximize financial gain. All districts do it, but what I'm saying is us constantly doing things like this, and not saying it's manipulation, wrongdoing, deceptive, is why this system's gonna, it's crashing. Everything's gonna change over because of this constant. So I'm just explaining how the game basically works. All districts do it, we do it, but it's changing. So we're gonna have to adapt to that. I don't, left-right, that paradigm, it does not matter. We have to react to what is gonna be there. It's a, with Cuyahoga County's 30% property value increase, the 20 mil floor allows automatic revenue gains without voter approval. House Bill 186 ceased to cap this at inflation rate because what they say is manipulation due to its impact on homeowner tax bills. Issue 19's timing, which all districts do, is you put, you put, you put the voter turnout as lower, like in May or August, and it's a common strategy, but raises transparency questions again. We're back to that thing. We, we have to get out of that cycle. We're told, we're told Brooklyn now is the destination district for open enrollment, mostly from Cleveland with 75 student trial this year, subject to annual board approval. For recent headlines I've seen in all the, the literature I've received, it says destination district language, suggesting a long-term commitment, not a one-year test to analyze results. A destination for who? We're focused on opportunities for outsiders while local taxpayers bear the cost. The district aims for 24 students per classroom despite our higher percentage of students with extra needs with strange resources. I know the analogy of the empty seats of the airplane, but that doesn't hold water. When we buy the plane, we pay for the pilots, we pay for the stewardesses. I want that extra stewardesses' time on ours. 24 is too much. 18 is large. I, I want smaller class size. I think our kids will be better off and thrive more through that. There's no written commitment to a hard cap on open enrollment. Like, there's 75 in. Where does the cap end? I know there's, it could be 140. I want a hard cap. The $20 million bond passes in March 2024. I support it. Our facilities need it, but in April, it stated, the open enrollment was discussed. To say that was tone deaf would be an understatement. The optics of the timing is what brought me involved. Also, in much fanfare, I was talking about June 30th, the $10 million moved into the 070 account. I'm not saying you did any wrongdoing. I'm saying it was moved. 10 million bucks moved, it's gotta be, well, I'd rather get a tweet about where the 10 million, why, the reasons than about a scoreboard or anything like that. It's $10 million. Alright, I'm finished, but you guys have the rest of the email. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No one else? Then we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. Got a little bit on my report today. Want to take some time to go over something, just for clarity, just sort of like I sent a message out to families on August 1st, excuse me, and which I welcomed them to the new school year and in which I did say we're a destination district. Not, in no time did I have anything, any comments regarding open enrollment. And my comments and labeling of our district is regarding the amazing things we've done over the last five years. So, so has zero to do with open enrollment. And starting on August 26th, they're all of our kids. And that's, regardless of where they live, regardless of where they went to school, they're, they're Brooklyn Hurricanes, and we're gonna take care of our kids. And we are a destination, destination district for the things we've done and will continue to do. So, just clarity. Couple, couple things in terms of positives, and I, I think I'm gonna start doing this just because it helps me keep track, and then it allows you guys to write down questions and follow. Got some great news. Cortez Cole is our, a national champ in terms of his, his age group in the track and field of winning high jump. Six and three-quarters of an inch, just amazing. There should be a story out on social media regarding Cortez, and so just another positive thing for our, for our students. But he did compete over the summer, and so I wanted to acknowledge that. Good news. District, through, through Mrs. Neal and the work of her team, along with Mr. Sheerhart, we've been approved, approved for the community eligibility program. What that means is, we're approved through the state of Ohio and the feds for free breakfast for all, and lunch for all of our students. K through 12. Doesn't apply for preschool because they don't have the designated lunchtime and breakfast time, but K through 12 will be free breakfast and free lunch for all of our kids. Couple caveats. If families had to, had a balance on their account as the end of last year, that'll still have to carry over, but anything going forward, our, our kids will eat for free. Parents need to do nothing. It's really, they come to school ready to learn, and they're, they get fed. I will be, we will be tracking kind of our lunch numbers and things like that, so at some point, I want to probably report to the board, has our, has our meal output increased? That's the goal. We want to make sure kids are eating, and there's not that, that barrier for kids to, to not eat in school. So, exciting, excited for, for that. Again, thanks to Sandy and her team. First day of, I'm sorry, orientation and open house for grades K through 12 is Tuesday, August 26th. First day of school for our students K through 12 is Wednesday, August 27th. First day of our, our pre-K is still September 2nd. I think I, I notified families, notified the board last week. Still having some delays on HVAC over at the Early Childhood Center. The equipment is in Ohio. It's in the freight company. We're just waiting on confirmation from Sterling as to when the crane's gonna show up and when we can start the install. From a timeline standpoint, once they start going, it's about a two-week install, two, two-and-a-half week install, and then we're probably about another week, week and a half outside of, of getting final inspections, final cleaning, and then final licensure from the state of Ohio. So I am hopeful, as soon as I have that confirmation when the install, let the board know and let the families know. But I am hopeful sometime mid-September, we'll be transitioning back over to the new building. There'll probably be a slight adjustment to the preschool schedule that week, but I'll notify the board, notify the families if there's any change in that schedule. Reviewing the scope of work for the GMP bid package, I want to thank Dunlop and Johnson, Randy and Grant for attending last meeting and kind of explaining some of the ins and outs of the project. What I want to share with the board, you can see the timeline. Timelines really haven't changed. There may be some flexibility after Rob and I kind of figure out a few things regarding, you know, projects, things like that. However, what I really want to share with the board is, you can see right here, everybody should have this sheet. And, and basically, what this does is it kind of outlines, and Rob, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean on you a little bit for the, for this conversation, too. Here's where we're at with regards to the renovation project and bond issue money. So if you look on the left-hand column, there's some assumptions that I just want to review with the board, and Rob, please jump in on this one, too. Stifel Finance at the beginning of this project estimated that the district would earn about $1.1 million from revenue on interest from the bond issue. As part of what we've done in terms of our budgeting of the project, we've estimated low, and we've estimated about $750,000 earning from that project. If you look at assumption two, and if, and what'll end up happening is, assumption two lines up with line number two on the, on that table there. The district has an estimated $1.3 million in reimbursables contingency or allowances that is built into the project that may be reallocated to the overall project at the end in the form of a GMP3 or to cover additional owner's contingency. So, part of the project means we have about $332,000 built into a CMR contingency. We have another 400, uh, five, excuse me, $504,000 in allowances within the project for D&amp;J to complete projects, and then we have a built-in owner's contingency of about $250,000. What that means is, if you look at line one on the, on the, on the table, after everything's said and done, we have about $19.58 million allocated towards this project after GMP2. That's out-the-door bond issue money. If we added that potential contingency reimbursable costs in, at, on top of that $19 million, you're gonna look at line three and see its total max cost of about 20 point, let's just say 20.9 million dollars, $88 million. Assuming revenue comes in low or comes in at $750,000, we're looking at about a shortfall of about $130,000 in change regarding the project. I will say, if the, if contingency comes in better than we expect, right, because right now, I'm expecting, we're expecting to, to use all $1.3 million. I doubt that'll happen, right? So, if that contingency comes in better, or if their earnings comes in better, better, that will drop that shortfall of $130,000. We won't know those things until the end of the project after we get all of our revenue savings. And as we go through the project, and Rob, you can explain the billing if I mistake, excuse me, misspeak. It's, it's paid in increments of quarters, correct? Or it's, it's paid in increments?
Of what is, I'm sorry.
The bond, as the bills are paid, we pay them in?
Yes.
Yeah, they pay them as they come through.
Yeah, because it's, the, the bills are actually, when they're turned in, they go into AVG, the engineering and the architect. And what they do is, they look at the percentage of completion, they certify it for the amount of that percentage, and then they forward it to me, and that's what we pay based on what they've said.
So the goal is to, I mean, from a paying standpoint, to hold on to the money as long as we can, so we can earn as much interest as we can on that account. Can't go above the 1.1 million, because then you get into arbitrage rules, which, which we can't do, but, but the goal is to hold on to that as long as we can. Couple things. Assumption three, the district will be, so with regards to those projects listed, abatement demo, which has always been a conversation, that the district is gonna pay that cost out of district capital funds. Either, either 003 or 070. Rob and I are working through that to see what, what he prefers on that, but that cost will come out of it. Abatement demo, for the, for the board's perspective, is 496, 250, and that's for everything. That's for the PAC, that's for entrances, stadium, labs, the whole nine yards. The only additional cost we'll have is we'll have a small cost of environmental analysis. So once they complete the demo, once they complete the abatement, Sandy has to bring in George from EA Group, and they will do an environmental analysis, making sure that all the asbestos has been removed from those areas. We will also, the asphalt project is $120,000, and that's the community walking path. It's actually, the community walking path's about $90, $95,000. There's some other asphalt work that Grant had to include in the project, so that's about 120 there. The terrazzo, got a great deal in the terrazzo refinishing at $135,000. And so, though, and cafeteria flooring, $80,000. We're going to, we're gonna, we're gonna use our, our allocated 003 funds that we have to move over there every year to pay for some of those projects. I think the key with this is, and when Rob and I were talking, we would only use our capital improvement account, the 003 or 070, if the contingency comes in at 1.3, the max, right? The goal is to take, so let's just play the game of, we use $800,000 of that contingency. We got a $500,000 above it. That would go towards those capital projects. So, the goal there would be to, to, again, and again, the way we're gonna do those projects, I still gotta work with, we gotta work with Grant on this, to, to move those projects to summer, fall, summer, fall of '26, and then summer of '27. Got to make sure that, that D&amp;J is done with the projects by, I believe it's August 1st, because their contract ends on July 31st, otherwise we have to pay them more money. So, we still have all of that summer to go through with some of those projects. With the stadium work, we need to make sure at minimum that the stands are ready for, for graduation in that spring. You know, the inside concession stand and locker rooms, that, that necessarily doesn't have to be finished by, by graduation, but, but those bleachers and that, that's a pretty easy process. That could happen pretty quickly. Questions? Rob, anything you want to add to it?
Just that with these projects, as, as we do them, we will still be able to put 75,000 aside for the next replacement of the field, 10 years down the road, or 18 years down the road. So we'll still be building into that. So we will have that money available for the repair.
We're allocating, we're allocating 75 a year to that?
Yes.
So that's great. And we're hoping, again, we're hoping, we're hoping minimum 12, if not a little bit more, but, but if we, you know, project 75 times 12, we're gonna be pretty, we're gonna be in pretty good shape to replace that field if we need to down the road.
Are you able to walk through the cost with me at this time?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, oh, yeah.
Alright, so, the hard cost of the total project with D&amp;J is at 17.5. That includes contingencies and allowances?
Yeah, so, so the hard, so GMP2, the hard cost for GMP2, this what, what the board's gonna vote on tonight, is actually 15.8 and change, something like that. Yeah, apologize if I don't have enough left. 15.8.
So that's the deduction of the?
So that's, so that's 15.3, and I'm giving you, I'm giving you a proximus crourn. 15.3 of hard construction costs, and then another $504,000 on allowances. We may see some of that allowance money come back. And what'll end up happening as we go through the project, I'm gonna say, okay, Grant, we're done with, we're done with all of the demo, or we're 75% done with the demo. Can I get, start getting some of our allowances back? And he'll start releasing that money back into the, the fixed cost account, which then will, will shorten that length. I forgot your question.
So?
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. So we, 15.3 for the hard cost, 504 for the contingency on the end.
Yes.
And then he, his fee, the CMR fee, so that, that's what brings it to the 17.5.
Yes, so the CM, so that, so that additional, that additional, so what happened was when we first bid D&amp;J back in summer of '24, they bid us, they, they quoted, they, they quoted us at a $19 million project. So their fee and their contingency was higher. And I think that the total between those two were somewhere around $1.9 million. Because the project cost for the actual bid here was lower, their fee lowers and the contingency lowers. So that's, so we've saved between the, the theoretical bid back in the summer of $1.9 million, we've saved about $108,000, which is assumption number five there, guys. And so, so the hard cost, so we've already allocated, we've already allocated AVG costs, D&amp;J costs, and the contingency and the reimburseals. So the only, the only new allocation that's happening tonight is the 15.3 hard cost of the construction and the 504 on the contingency.
Alright, so we're at 17.5 for, for D&amp;J, and then we've, we're at 1.3 for the Early Childhood Center.
Yep.
And we're at, how much is AVG's design fee?
AVG is 1,550, 064. $1,550,000, $550 and $64.
So we're just over the 20 million, but the idea is, the idea is that if we end up having to use capital funds in the, in the interim, we should be able to reimburse those.
Correct. If we, if we, worst-case scenario, if I took the cafeteria flooring, asphalt, terrazzo, and demo abatement out, and we pay through that either 070 or budgeting of 003, that's roughly about an $830,000 cost, right? If we, if I take that money out now, hard cost right now is 19,580, as a 19 million, 5 and change, right? But again, I think we're, we're gonna do better on allowances, better on contingency. I may, now, if we don't, I'm gonna come back to the board and say, hey, here's what, here's the problem we're running to on the renovation, ABC. And then that's where we would have a conversation of, okay, do you want me to hold off on the cafeteria flooring? Do you want me to hold, like, some of those decisions, I'll be honest with you, I think we can complete the project with 95% of the money through the bond issue, and then that small allocation through the district capital costs, because we have to spend the money on something anyway, right? If we had no bond issue, I would be, I would, Rob and I would be working on, hey, I need a, we need, we need new cafeteria floor. I want to redo the terrazzo. I want to do something, you know, those things would happen. I think you also, we also have to remember to, in this project, because of the proximity of the science labs and the rooms below it, which are the art room and the resource room and the lab, we're also getting, we're also renovating those rooms, right? Now, I could go to D&amp;J and say, Grant, take out those two rooms, right? I don't think we need to. I think we can accomplish this project and still be fiscally responsible between what we need to do from a facility standpoint.
And, Rob, if you could just walk me through this real quick. So, the, what Stifel gave you the estimated 1.1 million, I just want to make sure, I'm pretty sure it's just time of sense, but obviously, we got a big chunk now because the money was in there. Where are we at, where are we at now on that?
I have not done any drawdowns from the bond money, so we have been making good interest off of that to this point. I probably will by, by the end of this month or next month, we'll start to do the drawdowns to reimburse the cash for what we have from that pool. But I, we haven't had a need to draw it down at this point, so I'm leaving it there, trying to collect as much interest as I can to offset the costs. So, later down the road, I will be starting to grab it and pull it back.
And then obviously, it's gonna go, the interest we're gonna earn is gonna go down as the money goes down, so this, this estimate that they have of about 750,000 includes, do they know the, the project timeline for them to understand?
Roughly, yes. Yes. It, I mean, without knowing exactly when it's gonna hit, they kind of, we, we looked at it for three years, large drawdowns during probably the summer, because that's when most of the work is gonna be done, is in the summers. So, that's why at this point, I haven't done the drawdown, so we can collect as much upfront on the largest pot of money that we can. Because as I start drawing it down, it will go down, it will go back.
Can you get them to wait for us to pay them when the job is done?
I would like to.
Rob, where, are we, are we at now, 550, 600,000 right now? I don't want, if you don't know, I don't want to?
I was, actually, I was gonna report.
No, awesome.
For the month of July, we made $15,273 in interest just on bond money. And any, any interest that's made has been rolled over to, back and invested. So, to the end of July 30, as of July 31st, we have made about $658,000. That's what the market value is, $20,658,000. So, we're doing about?
So we're, we're about $100,000 short of our goal. And again, Crone, that 750 was our internal numbers, like that, like it was, I didn't want, like, that was, okay, let's, let's leave ourselves a little bit of breathing room in case market tanks, we don't, I mean, so, anything above that 750 helps reduce that number, which then we can allocate to, you know. So for example, if we made an extra $100,000, then I'm gonna take one of those district projects off the table and put that back into, to the bond.
What was it, Cam, about six?
658,875,000. And that's market value, and that's because the money has been reinvested.
Yeah.
So that's what, that's what all of the, all the investment's total now that we are doing.
And I, and I will say, Crone, and everybody, this is gonna be a partnership and a conversation I think we have to have on an ongoing basis, because I think part of what we're now gonna start seeing as they start digging into, like, right now, we're in the main gym. Main gym is pretty much demoed. They're starting the electrical work. We shouldn't see a lot of major costs in terms of, of that main gym, right? Because it's all bleachers and floor furnishings and floor finish, things like that. We'll start seeing some of the potential contingency allowance money being used as we begin. So we're gonna go, we're gonna demo through next summer, right? So, so starting in June, well, April for the music wing and the Performing Arts Center, labs and classrooms are starting in June. That's where the bulk of, of that abatement and demo money. But then, as they start opening things up, we're gonna be able to, to see where we're at in terms of some of that allowance. I will say too, and I had a conversation with Rocky today, still working with D&amp;J. So, right now, in the Performing Arts Center, they have allocated, Marlight is, is one of, it's the paneling on the walls, and it's on the side and in the ceiling. I'm working with D&amp;J and AVG to reduce that Marlight cost. So, gotta work with the AVG on the design, but there's a potential savings of between $100 and $200,000 right there that we're working through. We just haven't, didn't have it in time for this GMP package. So, these numbers are the, the most it's gonna come by. We may be, I may be able to report the next time, hey, we changed some of the part, the Marlight design. We picked up an additional $100,000, which helps the bottom line. So, I think the, the, the stress point for this project is, it's a renovation, as you, you know, as like, you know, we did flooring the other day. We didn't know what was gonna happen until we pulled the carpeting up and, and we had to make some adjustments. I think that's gonna happen as we go through the project. We're just gonna have to work together and have conversations. This is what we're seeing. This is what we're, what we're finding.
My last question. So, you just brought it up with the, with the panels. The, I know this is, they're no more than this number?
Correct.
Does that include any tariffs, any increases in cost? Because it's a three-year project.
Everything out the door.
So, if there's an increase, we're?
Everything out the door.
Okay.
Everything out the door.
Thank you so much, both of you. Appreciate it.
Any questions on the GMP? Okay, last couple things. I know you're meeting today regarding my goals, but I wanted to be able to, to provide you right here, and these are drafty. I think you've seen these before, but, but obviously, this is what I put down on paper in terms of goals for, for, for this school year. If you look at, this is really the strategic plan and implementation. This is really my goal, right? The, the implementation of this strategic plan is kind of the, the goal, the goals. goals for the district that is being implemented by folks like Lisa, Karen, Sandy, our principals. So, please, you know, use these two documents, but I'm looking forward to the conversation in terms of, of some of your areas you want me to focus on as we come to the beginning of the year. Strategic plan, so if you look at the front page here, the packet, it's all of our pillars. And then what I've asked all of the department heads and building principals to do is to create their, their kind, their, their goals for this school year, what we're working on collectively as a school district. And so, you will see, it's a six, six-page document. Pretty easy to follow, but this is what we'll be working on, working through. But again, I love input on this. Obviously, input, input on my goals as we move forward. And, Lisa, did you want anything about strategic plan? Cause you were, you were fundamental to that.
I, I mean, the only thing with the strategic plan, it really is a document that we use regularly and, and, you know, the items that go into that document really drive the work that we do throughout the school year, and so, working with all of the, either department chairs, building principals, and then when you watch when the principals go and speak in front of their staff, it, it really does trickle down, and it really gives us a roadmap to use throughout the year, and so, a lot of intentional thought went into that, a lot of conversations with, with the people doing the work. And it really just kind of keeps us in line, you know, and is this, a lot of things come to us, a lot, and it really does, like, is this in our plan? Is this where we're gonna put our energy?
One of the things I, we, we try, I try to say in, in our meetings, listen, let's, let's work purposefully and with goals in mind, and I've, I've asked everybody, listen, if, if you're working on something out of your departments, make sure it's represented in this document, because what we don't wanna do is we don't wanna start cherry picking this initiative, that initiative, this initiative without purpose, because then what'll end up happening is, the goals within the strategic plan will not get enforced. So, now, that doesn't mean things happen, right? Right, things happen? That doesn't mean some goals that we may, actions that we may not get to this year, which may be pushed towards next year, however, these are the doc, this is the document that guides our work, and of course, like, I, I need the board's input in terms of that direction too, right? Cause I, you all are very vital to, to the work we do, you're community members, you, 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 you have kids in the district, you live and breathe this district, just like, you know, this community, just like us. So, your input is absolutely viable, you know, and valuable too, as we start the school year next week. That's it, any questions?
We'll move on to the treasurer's report, would you share her?
Good evening. I wanted to go over the handout that I gave you, this is the commercial paper. This is a breakdown, I'm required by law, ORC to report to the board the commercial paper, the sales and purchases and the investment income from commercial paper. I also have to report it to the superintendent of schools for the state, and I also have to report it to the auditor of state. I will be doing those, doing those two tomorrow, sending it in. So, the, the first page is the, the debt proceeds from the 20 mils, the 20, 20 million dollar bond. So, the purchases for the year, you can see the, the quantity, when it was purchased, and then the sales, when they, when they came due, maturity dates, all of them were in, in June, oh, sorry, one was in May. So that's, that's basically the breakdown of the investments in the commercial paper for the debt. On the backside of that page, through June, we, and the sales of those, the commercial paper, we made 84,433 dollars in interest on that. And the second page is the general fund money that we have invested in, in Red Tree. That's roughly about 5 million general fund money in there. And that's the purchases and the sales of the commercial paper using that money that, that Red Tree has. And if you flip that over, the general fund from the sale of the commercial paper made about 20,853 dollars in interest on that for the year. And that runs July 1st, 24 through June 30th, through 25, so that lasts fiscal. So, I would be sending these out to the Department of Education and the state auditor. Basically, that's for that. So financially, for the month of July, it's the first month of our fiscal year, so the, the month-to-date, the year-to-date numbers are the same. I've already talked about the, the bond money, the interest, and the market value to this point. The general fund for the month of July, we received the first advance from the county auditor, that was 1.4 million, which was, which was good. We did also receive the final settlement, but that came in August, so I'll talk about that next, next meeting. For the month of July, the investment money was 81,752 dollars. That's roughly 9.3% of what I've forecasted for the year. Personnel benefits, they're running about 80%, which is normal for the, for personnel benefits for a service industry like us. Operations came in at about 4.29%. We were looking at about 615,000 dollars greater in revenue than expense, so we're, we're on a positive side. And just, just to remind everyone, with the real estate taxes, it's very cyclical, it's, it's dependent on when the taxes are paid, we usually receive it within a month or two later. So, when we get a big chunk, we have to live off that for the next couple months before we get the next chunk. The other thing is, we had about 400,000 dollars that was delinquent. The county charges us 10% of the delinquent amount for collections. So, it cost us about, I think it was about 412, I'm sorry, 41,000 dollars just in, in the delinquent tax collections that the county charged us. It happens all the time, there's nothing we can do allowed, and it's in law that they are allowed to charge that much. So, I, I have to write it off as an expense, and I do that whenever we go through these collections. Next month, I believe we should be seeing a payment for, from the state for the mobile home tax, I'm sorry, not mobile home, most of them rollback. So, that is, that's given a credit to the taxpayers, and then the state picks that up and reimburses the district, all the districts in Ohio for that amount. And we usually get that, we get that directly from the state, and that usually comes in September or October, it just depends. So that will be a, in our case, it's not, it's not a big chunk, but it's, it is something from the state. And that's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to board committee reports and comments from board members, and we'll also, Allison.
Good evening, everybody. At this time, I don't, I do not have any committee reports, as we are just starting in the beginning of the school year next week, and I'm sure I'll be hearing from the committees that I am on, just when we're gonna have a meeting. But I just wanna welcome back our, to our students and our staff, I hope everybody had a good summer, I hope you all have an amazing year. There's a lot going on in our district, not just our construction, but kids being able to become involved, and everything's starting up, from band to athletics, clubs will be starting very soon as well. I just wanna say thank you, and I see Sandy's here today, but thank you Sandy, and to your summer workers, and your crew, maintenance as well, for getting all the rooms and all the grounds and everything, the buildings, together and ready to go. So, when I pop in, I look for them, and they are working, so that's great. The fall sports season has begun, and, let's see, girls soccer, lost a close one the other day to Lorraine, and they are now 0-1, obviously, and their next two games are at home, 5 o'clock on Thursday, against Shaw, and then the following week on the 27th, against our rival Trinity. Boys soccer did tie to Lorraine, 4-4, and they will be at home as well on the 21st, and then they will be home again on the 27th against Portland. Volleyball dropped their matches to Wycliffe last night. I know it was a disappointing loss to the girls, because from what I understand, they played very well, and they will be home on the 21st, and 21st is gonna be a busy, busy, busy day, because volleyball's also home at 6:00, and then they're home again all in the morning on Sunday, or Saturday, against Lake Bridge Academy and Cleveland Heights. Volleyball has their first game at home, it's this week, and that is our alumni appreciation game with our, our rededication to our turf, our stadium and our turf field at 6:30. Fall sports fundraiser is going to be on September 6th, from 6:00 to 9:00, at Rook's Bar and Grill, 30 dollars a ticket. They'll have raffle baskets, sideboards, 50/50 drawing, if you can, come out and support our fall athletic teams. And then, the only other thing is, that I have to report is, please mark your calendar for our Hall of Fame induction ceremony on September 11th at 6:00 PM. And this year's inductees include Shaylin Baughkins, 2015 grad, Jeremy Brown, 1996, Mark Butler Jr., 1988, Sean Francis, 1991, Mike Keigho, 2003, the Honorable Menel Saab, I believe she's a 1983 graduate, our 1989, 90 hockey team, our 1995 track team, and being awarded the Ron Sudsy Community Engagement Award, this year is Andy Selkers.
Oh, Ron Sudsy.
Oh, Ron Sudsy, I'm sorry, yeah, what did I say?
Sudsy.
Oh, Sudsy, yeah, I'm sorry. And then, can they call the board? Residents call if they want to attend?
They can call, that's another...
They just call, okay.
Yeah, they can, that's all, yeah.
That would be great, I know that, that inductees would love to have you here, it's a great way to support our alumni. And that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Welcome back, I, I feel like I just picked up my kids for the last day yesterday, and I, I don't know where this summer went, so welcome back to everybody. I wanna piggyback, Sandy and my crew did, did an excellent job during the summer, and you guys are busy, and I don't know how you guys do it all, so good job on that. To the teachers and administrators, welcome back, and to the students and welcoming from other cities and our, our current ones, you are hurricane, and can't wait to see you guys in the hallways, and it's gonna be a great year, very excited about it. I wanna remind everyone about Home Days, September 27th to 28th, the schools graciously allowed us to use the stadium there, so it's gonna be a great two-day event. The first day's gonna be games, and, and magicians, and bands, and dance troops, it's gonna be a really, really cool day, and then the second day is the big band blowout all day on Sunday. So, brooklynhomedays.com, all the information's there, we're encouraging people to register for it, just so we kinda have an idea of how many people. Over 200 people registered already, which is great, over 2,500 people are interested in going on Facebook, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be a great event, very excited about it. And congratulations to Cortez, that's an amazing accomplishment, so congratulations to you, and that's my report, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna start out by congratulating Cortez Cole, continuing high jump university here in Brooklyn. Cortez went to middle school states last year, in eighth grade, jumped 5'8", joined an AAU team this summer, and jumped 6'1" to win nationals. So Cortez has a very bright future ahead of us, or him, a lot of trips to Columbus in his future, it's gonna be a lot of fun to watch, so congratulations Cortez. Thank you Sandy and the staff for all the hard work you did this summer. I also wanna add thank you to the Brooklyn preschool team for their agility, you know, trying to set up two different areas, so thank you guys for all the hard work you put in. Welcome back to all of our students, and welcome to our new Hurricanes, we're happy to have you guys, can't wait to see you all back in the halls. Congratulations to Sandy and her team as well for this free breakfast and lunch that we're able to provide, this is a tremendous thing to give families and kids, and take a load off of people's wallets, it's incredible, and although Dr. Claris is right, it's just for K to 12, don't forget, if you have a kid in pre-K, you do get free snacks. So you're not gonna get lunch or breakfast, you're not gonna get lunch or breakfast, but you're gonna get goldfish and some oranges.
You got it.
And, yeah, fall sports are starting, everybody go out, support. Brooklyn Alumni Association is hosting the dedication night this Friday, so everybody come out, was it an hour prior to the game?
Yeah.
It's like it's an hour, yeah, hour prior to kickoff, the alumni will be out in the, in front of the stadium, we'll have some stuff set up, come check it out. So yeah, welcome back. And that concludes my report.
Rob.
Again, welcome back, everybody. Polaris, they started school today, correct?
They did, they did, seniors today, yes.
I'm gonna start with their report. Just so everybody knows, Polaris is, this is 50 years for Polaris has been around, I believe in, it started a long time ago. Still got it by a few years, though. They have a community open house, trick or trade event that they're gonna hold Thursday, October 30th, we'll talk more about it, 2025, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. If you have never been to Polaris, they're gonna have this open house, so you can see the wonderful place that it is. Just had the opportunity to tour the new automation, engineering, robotics area, it's not all done, but it's gonna be quite impressive. Those are some good tax dollars spent in a good place, I'll tell you that right now. Those programs are gonna create jobs, and a lot of people learned a, a great trade, and I think it's a wonderful place to be. With that said, on July 20, on July 31st, the Polaris Education Team Superintendent met with the Lorraine County Community College Leadership Team, there's like 30 people from Lorraine, Lorraine Community College, including the president, to discuss aligning college credit and scholarships with the new engineering, robotics, automation, and including the veterinary technology, the veterinary tech associate degree and other opportunities, so there's a lot of good things going. The new superintendent, she has some pretty good clout in Lorraine County, they have a good relationship, so there's a lot of good things going for that. They are now accepting Polaris Hall of Fame nominations, the criteria, do you know anybody who's a grad, dah dah dah. Polaris Hall of Fame nomination deadline is Friday, September 5th, 2025, eligibility alumni, you have to be 20, 2018 or earlier, outstanding community slash business supporters, submit your nomination to polaris.edu/halloffame. Got any questions? 440-891-7609, or email dmillar@polaris.edu. And then the other thing, dah dah dah, I believe all the superintendents are meeting with the Polaris superintendent September 18th.
Correct.
So, and that is the end of my report, with the exception of, I do have technology, as I could tell you, I was on the stage the other day, and there's a lot of, a lot of Chromebooks everywhere, I actually tripped over a while, so, they're doing a lot of work there, so, and that's it, that's my report.
Thank you. I don't really have anything today, except we just came from the new student, student orientation, and there were so many new students, and they were very excited to be here, so that made me excited, and that's all I have.
Could I, could I, but, one more time, I did, there's gonna be a grand opening for the building at Polaris... There's going to be a grand opening for the building at Polaris, the new wing. And there's a real good chance that Jim Tressel will be there for the cutting of the ribbon, March 6th. I'll double-check my date if I'm not pretty comfortable. It's going to be a grand opening, so I just want to note that. Thank you. No, you don't.
I do not.
Okay, then, if that's everything, we'll move on to the treasurer's consent agenda.
I have a resolution to approve the minutes of the board meeting for July 15th and August 5th. Resolution to approve the financial statements for July of '25. Resolution to approve student activities for '25, '26 school year. And a resolution to approve donation from the OHSAA for $1,250 for athletics.
Okay, for approval of consent agenda, may I have a motion, please?
Show move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Thank you to the Association.
Yep.
Mr. Shearhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Roserun?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Rafter?
Yes.
Ms. Crawl?
Item 5, superintendent's consent agenda administrative items. 5.1, resolution to approve second reading of board bylaws and policies. This is the final reading. Item 5.2, resolution to approve service agreements with educational alternatives for both transportation and tuition for an outplace student. Item 5.3, resolution to approve Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce membership as Board of Education. Item 5.4, resolution to approve participation in the community eligibility provision program for '25, '26 school year. And item 5.5, resolution to approve agreement with maximum healthcare services for a one-on-one nursing services for a student. Item 5.6, resolution to approve PSI affiliates behavior management program agreement. This is for our non-public St. Thomas Moore. And it's just a reminder, we're the middleman, so to speak. Money funnels through us, so we have to approve those agreements, but the money goes directly to STM. And then item 5.7, approval of the consent agenda.
May I have a motion, please?
Show move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Roserun?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Rafter?
Yes.
Ms. Crawl?
Yes.
Item 6, superintendent's consent agenda personnel items. Item 6.1, resolution to approve supplemental eighth-grade team leader. Item 6.2, resolution to approve certified professional development. Item 6.3, resolution to approve the classified resignation, classroom assistant. Item 6.4, resolution to approve classified personnel. This is our newest cleaner, just from a standpoint, we'll probably, at our next meeting in September, we'll probably have two or three classroom assistants, a couple more cleaners, and some food service folks. So Sandy's working through those interviews and applications now. So those resolutions will more than likely, depending on background checks and when they start retro to the day they're, they start. So just FYI on that one. Item 6.5, resolution to approve classified staffing. This is additional adjusted hours. We had originally approved them back in, I think it was the spring, May, June, somewhere around there. These are just adjustments to those hours that we approved. And then item 6.6, approval of the consent agenda for personnel.
May I have a motion, please?
Show move.
May I have a second? Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Roserun?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Rafter?
Yes.
Ms. Crawl?
Yes.
We resolve that the Brooklyn Board of Education authorizes a first guaranteed maximum price amendment with construction manager at risk Dunlop and Johnson in connection with the Brooklyn City Schools Amendment Package Number Two in capital improvement projects, contracts, and exhibits are on file in the treasurer's office. May I have a motion, please?
Show move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Roserun?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Rafter?
Yes.
Ms. Crawl?
Resolve that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby amends the amended and restated consortium agreement of suburban health consortium as noted. May I have a motion, please?
Show move.
May I have a second? Questions, comments?
Rob, if you can, just elaborate on what this exactly is.
Yes. The suburban healthcare consortium, they're, what they're doing is, they want to amend the contract to change the administrative group, team. Right now, it's 18 districts, everybody has a vote. When we get together, it always ends up putting things off because everybody has to kind of turn through all the information and everything. So what's looking to do is to have nine board of directors who will do the operational pieces of everything, then bring that back to the collective, the membership, to vote on it at that point. So it, because it's a change in the, in the structure and it's in the contract, the local boards have to vote to approve the changes. That's why it's here tonight. So everybody will still have a vote. It's just what they're trying to do is they're, they're trying to set up a smaller team of directors to kind of, like I said, kind of sift through everything and then get it where the nine agree on something, and then bring it back to the whole collective to vote on it. That's all.
Are you comfortable with this?
Yes. And I have volunteered to be one of the half.
I was going to say, who are the nine?
The, I'm not sure who the other, the other four is, because it was, people were emailing things.
So it's, it's nine of the 18?
Yes. Yeah, so it will, it will be half. And the other, the other thing in there, I forgot to mention this, is they want to open it up to other, they don't want to just keep it at school districts like it is right now. They're looking at other political subdivisions so they can grow and add more to it. One of the things that they're looking at is district, district libraries. I think there's one or two that they, they have been in contact with. So again, because it's, it's in the bylaws and in the contract, every district has to approve that. So that's another change that's in there.
Rob, do we have any districts that are vying to get into the consortium? I know there was some back and forth.
There was one. I think it was Lorraine.
Okay.
And I guess Lorraine has decided not to.
Okay.
Yeah, they've gone out of the consortium. But I know they are, they are talking to other people, other groups.
Okay, Mr. Shearhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Roserun?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Rafter?
Yes.
Ms. Crawl?
Yes.
Then we'll move on to the OSBA Capital Conference Delegate and Alternate Discussion.
Through the, through the W, correct?
Uh, giving the, uh, Jason.
You need a little something. I'll say them by name.
Okay, and then the alternate?
Jason, alternate, I'll nominate Jason as an alternate's firm.
Resolve that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves Allison Rafter as delegate and Jason Hubble as alternate to the 2025 Capital Conference from the annual business meeting. May I have a motion, please?
Show move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shearhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Roserun?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Rafter?
Yes.
And Ms. Crawl?
Yes. Is there any other business? Okay, then the announcement of the next regular board meeting is Tuesday, September 2nd, in the Treasurer's Office Conference Room, 9200 VIL, for Brooklyn, Ohio, at 6:15 p.m. We are going to move into executive session. Resolve that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education recess into executive session pursuant to RC 121.221 to consider the employment, employment evaluation of a public employee superintendent and treasurer. By conclusion of this executive session, the board presence shall gavel the board back into open session at this location. All matters discussed in this executive session are designated to the public officials and employees confidential pursuant to RC 102.03B because of the status of proceedings and/or the circumstances under which the information will be received and preserving its confidentiality as necessary to the proper conduct of government business. Mr. Shearhart, I'm sorry, may I have a motion, please?
Show move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shearhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Roserun?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Rafter?
Yes.
Ms. Crawl?
Yes.